Thank you all for coming today and happy new year to you all. We are having much in the spirit of the NFL where they actually have Monday night football and Thursday nights, we're having our Wednesday Board of Selectmen meeting on Thursday. So if to kick things off, if I can ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and ask Mr. Kylie to lead us.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can ask everybody to remain standing. We want to have a moment of silence in recognition of the loss of life of several of the police officers around the country that happened recently in the end. Please consider thinking about a change in tone for our country in terms of how we're Thank you. All right, first up on the agenda is Wednesday's on Thursday's Pet with former First Selectman Sherri Stenick.
I thought I was being preempted by a football game when you started that. Anyway, this is Herman and Herman is wants to get his petter bug. He's at least five years old and he's male and we think neutered and so he should be $5. No, he's not what? You think he's 50? Why, because he's not neutered?
I don't think so.
Okay. I can't see, there's too much fur. I'll leave it at that. He's available at 211 One Rock Highway and seems to be a very gentle guy. So, thank you very much.
All right, what a great way to start off the new year with a new pet for your family. Sherri, thank you. All right, next up to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting December 17th, 2014, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second that. Any discussion or edits to the minutes? All right, are we ready to vote?
We are.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. A unanimous vote, what a great way to start off the new year.
I love it.
All right. We have, next up on the agenda, we have a resignation. As those of you that were at our last meeting or had a chance to read about that, we have the resignation from the Board of Selectmen of Kristen McCarthy-Weighy, a Democrat from 1625 Melville Avenue, resignation date effective 1/7/2015. Just in case anyone's following the dates, that resignation was in time for Kristen to be sworn in as our new state representative up in Hartford yesterday. So Kristen, congratulations on that and we still miss you on this board, I want you to know that. Next up, under appointments, to here consider and act upon the following appointment to the Board of Selectmen, Sheila H. Marmian, Democrat, 214 Fairfield Woods Road for a term of 11/11 through 11/15 to fill the vacancy for Kristen McCarthy-Weighy who resigned. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And I'll second that. Sheila's here. Any comments or questions from the board?
No questions, just a couple of comments. I would like to thank Sheila for volunteering to serve on the Board of Selectmen and Sheila has a wonderful background. She has served well on the RTM, she's proven herself to be a good community leader and a friend to everyone and I would, I look forward to working with her and welcoming her to the Board of Selectmen.
I would concur with Mr. Kylie's remarks and comment that I've had a chance to work with Sheila and her role on the RTM and it's been a pleasure seeing somebody bring that intelligence, someone who's articulate, somebody who provides an even-handed balance amidst some of the passions that sometimes erupt on the board. She's always provided a, both a rational and a rationale for her comments and that's greatly appreciated and look forward to working with her on this board. Any further comments?
No.
All right, any comments from the public? If you could come up and give us your name and address please?
Good afternoon. My name's Kristen McCarthy-Weighy. I think you read my address a few minutes ago, 1625 Melville Avenue.
Thank you.
I, as you can see, I'm missing talking at this minute, so I came today to speak in support of Sheila Marmian who is here with her family actually. Claire and Liam and Connor and her husband, Don are here to join her, but those who follow the RTM probably know Sheila fairly well. Those who don't may not know Sheila, you'll be fortunate to know her through her service here at the Board of Selectmen level. When I first met Sheila as a fellow Stratfield parent and someone in the neighborhood, I found her to be immediately welcoming, witty and intelligent. And as a leader, she brings all those qualities as well as a strong voice to this table. She brings a diversity of experience and as I said, the wit, that sense of humor, I think that you will enjoy. You also commented on her ability to remain even keeled in the face of the difficulties that sometimes arise and I think that you, that we as a town will be very blessed and enriched by Sheila's service. So I wholeheartedly support her and I know that this will be a hope, assuming a positive vote today will be a wonderful outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? I should note that Ms. Marmian comes to us with the unanimous endorsement from the Democratic Town Committee here in Fairfield. Are we ready to vote?
We are.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Marmian, congratulations. Now we've got a couple of things to do, would you like to come to the podium and comment? Do you have any comments to add at this point?
Thank you very much. Sheila Marmian, 214 Fairfield Woods Road, Fairfield. First of all, I want to say how excited I am to be joining the Board of Selectmen. I've loved being on the RTM, it's been a terrific experience working on both sides of the aisle. I've learned a ton and I want to say thank you, of course, to Kristen for all of her support. These are really big shoes to fill, truly. Thank you to Mike for your support and Kevin also for your support. I'm looking forward to working with you both. I'd also like to thank the Democratic Town Committee for their support and most importantly, my family. Constantly I'm coming home, they're coming home and I'm like, you know, we're going to have pasta tonight because I have a meeting. They're like, pasta again. That's the refrain. Or another meeting and yes, I go to a lot of meetings and I think I'm going to be going to a lot more meetings, so they've been really terrific in understanding and I couldn't do it without them because they are the best, the best kids ever. Thank you to my husband who's also very supportive. We have great discussions in our household about issues that are going on in town and we don't always agree in our house. And that's a beautiful thing because those differences of opinion and the discussion is what we all should look for and what I hope to have on the Board of Selectmen because I think we're only richer for that discussion. So, thank you to my family and that's it.
Great, well, thank you. We've got one other step in the process here. We have invited our town clerk, Betsy Brown, to come and swear you in so that you can take your official seat at the table.
Put me to work, okay.
Kevin and I were discussing this and we're concerned about being overworked alone here so we wanted to get you.
Hi, Betsy.
Hi. I will miss you on the RTM.
Thank you.
As the county clerk.
Thank you very much.
You can raise your hand.
Betsy, if I could ask, if you guys could stand like with back of the ball so that everybody here can see both of you. There you go.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Fairfield to the best of your ability to help your God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Can I get one picture with my family perhaps?
Absolutely.
Could they come up there and you'll indulge me for like two hours.
Sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Come on up here guys.
Kristen, I guess you are official of the town, is that your kid?
No, it's yours.
Okay. Great, thank you. Oh, you want that one too? Okay.
Congrats mom.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay guys.
See you later.
Pizza tonight.
Pizza.
Please take your seat. Steve, thank you for joining.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, are we okay with moving on?
Yeah, sure.
You've got your minutes and, all right. All right, next up, item seven, which is a kind of an update, a report of sorts from the chief of police. Well, we thought it was good to have the chief come before us and relate some of the activities by our police department outside of the normal course of business. One of the things we realize is our public safety employees routinely go above and beyond the call of the normal job description and we thought it would be good to take a moment, given the events around the country, to recognize in our community that the police not only protect our community but are really part of our community and we wanted to give the chief a few minutes to talk about that.
Thank you very much and, you know, certainly it's a great opportunity to have the national conversation on police and law enforcement come down to a local level and that's really, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I know Lieutenant Broderick, Keith Broderick, who not only is a patrol lieutenant but also the president of the police union, wanted to be here, however, he couldn't be here. However, Deputy Chief Chris Liddy and Captain Josh Zabin are here in the audience as well. And over the last several weeks, I've been asked by many people, how do you, how do you still be a police officer? How do you talk to the officers that are working and how do you, when you hire new officers, how do you tell them that they should become officers and the people that are wanting to be officers, how do you encourage, you know, to continue the trait of being a police officer? And many people have asked that question and it's a hard question to answer given the dialogue that's been lately going on and I bring it all back to impact. We become police officers because we know that we can have impact, mostly positive impact. At times we unfortunately have to bring a negative light to people's lives, but we have to have positive impact and I can assure you that from the time this meeting started today until it ends, a Fairfield police officer somewhere in town will be having positive impact, one-on-one with some member of the community. Either they're locked out of their house, their car broke down, they got in a car accident and somebody's coming to kind of give them that peace of mind. And that's what we have to remember throughout the country, that one-on-one contact between people who need us and us is occurring all the time and that's really what we have to do is win the hearts and minds of those one-on-one contacts. And before I go any further, you talk, I mentioned car accident, I wanted to take just a brief moment to express my sincere thanks to not only you, Mr. Tetra, Mr. Kylie and congratulations, Ms. Marmian, for your new position, but also, you know, just to thank the community for their outreach after my accident. We all tend to sometimes forget that we all need someone at some point or another. And I've, am reaching my 28th year in law enforcement and I never really needed anybody in law enforcement or public safety. And at the time of my car accident, I'm hurt, I'm scared, confused, and I needed people. And people came and they were the police officers, the firefighters who were at the car door and then the ambulance personnel and then the outreach of visitors and calls and cards. We all have to remember that, that when you need someone, there's people here in town that are going to come help you and that day certainly I appreciate all of their help and support and I appreciate the community outreach. I wanted to steal that little opportunity to thank people publicly because it really means a lot and I could break down in tears because it means so much to me. So, we are more than, the dialogue right now is bad in the country. It's, it's saying that it's okay to hurt police officers and frankly, okay to kill police officers. There are people that always want to hurt us. The difference is that people have acted on that and people have talked about it and then others have acted on it, so the dialogue is pretty bad, not for a crime in progress. These officers were killed because of who they were and the uniform that they wore. And when you only hear one side of it, it's hard to really imagine what we are as police officers, but in the town of Fairfield, we are woven into the community and we're really woven into the fabric of the community. Over the last year, Fairfield police officers responded to 44, over 44,000 calls for service in this town. Somebody called and needed us 44,000 times, we were there to respond to that. Many of the responses show up in the local newspapers because there were arrests, there are tickets, there's a variety of other things that we encounter, but it really only represents, that 44,000 represents only a portion of what it is that we actually do in town. Many of, many of the things that we do don't ever make the newspapers or the headlines and they really make a really important difference in the community. Twenty-five, well, 35 officers, I want you to know, from the town of Fairfield went down to the funerals for the New York City police officers that were killed in the line of duty. Our honor guard went down there to show respect and to really give an appreciation of what it is to be in law enforcement. And the incidents in Paris show all of us that things can change really quickly and in law enforcement, we have to prepare for those really bad things and those bad threats. But we're more than just enforcers and we're more than protectors. So how are we woven into the community of Fairfield? We are everywhere that you are. Think about it for a second. When you celebrate and watch the Memorial Day Parade, we are there with you. We are there at the Fourth of July celebration and other major events, the blessing of the fleet in Southport, the Christmas tree lighting, the half marathon and all of the 375th events that occurred throughout town this past year, we were there with you. And how else are we there with you? Officers on a daily basis during the weekdays, go to the schools and engage our students in the SHAPE program, which is designed to replace the DARE program and teach kids from kindergarten through eighth grade, the importance of proper choices. Not only proper choices, but also it engages them in a relationship with the police officers, which is important. If they don't find that interesting enough, we have our Police Explorer program. Kids in town that are interested in law enforcement or not interested in law enforcement but want to have something to do can engage in the Police Explorer program, which has been around forever. Our police officers and our Police Athletic League, they volunteer on weekends to hold such events as the fishing derby that occurs in the springtime. I know, we hope to get there real quickly this time of year. In the fall, we do punt, pass and kick football programs with the kids. We offer station house tours, rides in police cars, rides on our police boat. If that's not enough, we offer training to college students in town to how to protect themselves should they ever find themselves in a violent encounter. We hold a Citizens Police Academy, invite citizens, in fact, the next one starts January 21st. We invite you to come in for a 10-week program to see how we work. Don't listen to the media, kind of come in and really know what it is that we do in law enforcement. We offer internship programs, not only at the college level but high school level. If high school kids have an interest in law enforcement, they can come and spend time with us. We just recently held a forensic science class for high school students. High school students who are interested in science, maybe not forensics, can come in and join with us and kind of learn about the forensic side of law enforcement. We have a scholarship program, many of you may not be aware of. This past year, our Fairfield Police Union gave scholarships to a graduating senior at Ward and Ludlow High School. In addition to that, gave five scholarships to police officers' children who are entering college this, this past fall. Incidentally, we are holding a golf tournament in support of that scholarship fund in April at the Patterson Club and I know that whether you're a golfer or not, we certainly would want you there to volunteer to drive a cart or something for us. Officers have volunteered recently on toy drives. We've, have officers who are off-duty go out and help raise toys so that we can spread them around, not only to the local hospitals. I know that you're probably aware of the fact that kids get into the hospital year-round so they want to have toys to give the kids if they're out at a surgery, so it's not just for the holidays. We also have teamed up with some of the Newtown Sandy Hook groups and provide toys to some of their networks and that's all on a volunteer basis. The Fairfield Police did a lot of walking this year. In October, I'm sorry, in April, we walked a mile in her shoes to bring awareness to domestic violence, all volunteer work to try and get the word out. If that wasn't enough, in October, we walked like mad with the mad people to get awareness of alcohol, awareness to the community, all in support of making our community safer. We hold freshman forums for the high school freshmen who, on alcohol abuse, trying to keep them making the right choices. Internet classes, neighborhood watch, watch programs that we have. On a volunteer basis, I'm sure many of you have heard about it over the holiday season, officers volunteered their time and services to join 180 seniors, Mr. Tetra, I know you were there, to serve 180 seniors lunch for the holiday season. We had Santa Claus, we had carolers there and our officers actually served, served food to the seniors. We have a safe return program that we recognize that there are some members of our community who have disabilities. Mostly younger children and parents are concerned that if they wander, how are they going to get back? We've developed a safe return program that all officers can have in their car if they encounter somebody who's wandering about and we don't know who they are, we have a way to get them back to where they belong. We have senior driving, teen driving programs, we team up with AAA. If you're on vacation, the Fairfield Police Department will come by once a day, if possible, to check your house to make sure that everything's okay. A lot of people know that, we just kind of do that kind of stuff. And downtown business checks. I know I took a long time to talk about some of the things we do. There's a reason why. Police officers are like icebergs. Icebergs are very impressive to look at. They can be formidable and at times they can appear very graceful, but we all know with an iceberg, you're only seeing 10% of the iceberg. Law enforcement, the general public sees 10% of what a police officer does. The other 90%, they get from the national debate or they get from television. All I'm saying is that there's a whole bunch more that we do and we are at 100 Reef Road just off the post road. Anytime you want to come down and learn more about it, we have 108 proud members who are certainly willing to share with you what we do. So, I want to thank you for the opportunity to allow me to at least share some of that and to, and to your words, to change that dialogue from a national level to a local level. So, thank you very much for allowing that.
Steve, thank you. I've got a few comments to make, but I'd like to take a moment and read the following proclamation from the town of Fairfield. The town of Fairfield honors and recognizes Friday, July 9th, January 9th, sorry, 2015 as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Numerous national law enforcement organizations are partnering together to give an awareness to this important day. And whereas this day highlights how important law enforcement is to our community and our nation, it was initiated to show how law enforcement officers, to show law enforcement officers, that the citizens they are serving and protecting recognize the difficult and sometimes impossible career they have chosen. And whereas each day, an estimated 780,000 police officers across the country and over 100 here in Fairfield, put a badge on and go to work knowing they may face extremely dangerous situations. On average, throughout our nation, between 105 and 203 officers die in the line of duty each year. 50,000 officers are assaulted in the line of duty each year and 14,000 officers are injured in the line of duty each year. And whereas law enforcement officers play such an integral role in the Fairfield community, whether people are in a car accident, endure a home invasion, an assault or many other situations where they need help. And whereas, this past year, the men and women of the Fairfield Police Department responded to over 44,000 calls for service for a variety of needs and in addition, provided non-traditional police services, including gathering toys for the holidays, helping serve lunch to our seniors, and just for the record, they also paid for that lunch before they served Provided tours and police car rides to children, spending time in classrooms, reinforcing good behavior and mentoring our youth through our Police Explorer program and Police Athletic League. And whereas on January 9th, the town of Fairfield calls upon all citizens to support our law enforcement in a variety of ways. Wear blue clothing in support of law enforcement. Send a card or letter to our police department at 100 Reef Road, Fairfield, Connecticut, 06824. Share a story about a positive law enforcement experience on social media. Ask children in our community to write letters in support of law enforcement and most importantly, if you see a police officer, please give them your thanks. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Tetra, First Selectman of the town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim Friday, January 9th, 2015 as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day throughout the town of Fairfield. Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila? Why don't we all come up and hand this to her?
Okay.
And certainly it's not me, it's the thank you for the one under the screen. Thank you very much. And just a option, any follow-on comments from the board?
Yeah, quickly, if you don't mind. What I'd like to say to Chief McNamara and Assistant Chief Liddy and Captain Zabin who are here, as well as the 105 other police officers, is, is thank you for your service. The town recognizes what you do every hour of every day, we greatly appreciate it. And the proclamation that Mr. Tetra read was wonderful, I agree with every word of it. The, the words that Chief McNamara used about all the programs that our police department participates in and, and the many ways they help our citizens are wonderful and it's great to get that information out there. And you are right, you are woven into the community, the fabric of us, but even more than that, you are part of what we call the family of Fairfield and we welcome you and we respect you and thank you every day.
Sheila, would you care to add?
Sure, I just, on the family theme, I mean, my kids went through the DARE program and I enjoyed reading the materials. I think they got a lot out of it and I think the bottom line is, we need to change mindsets young, go in young and I, I think you are very successful with that program, which is now called the SHAPE program. So that was very interesting. And then you're just using the iceberg metaphor and that's fascinating because I think we do, you know, driving down the road, I know when I see a police officer, I feel safe. I know the cell phones, you know, always tucked away, but I'm saying that, always. But I think the point is that we want people to see police officers as Kevin said, you know, as part of our community and as somebody that we can approach, somebody who is approachable and that's, that's very important. I think you're doing a terrific job helping us get there.
And I concur with all that, I'm going to add just a couple of comments. One is that this is not new, that our police have been involved in our community. It's happened for a long time and without saying exactly how long, I will point out that the PAL organization has been a valuable part of our community and I did get to participate in the punt, pass and kick contests growing up, so it's, it's been quite a few years, Chief McNamara. I did get to join you at the Mad Dash program or Walk Like Mad program. You have been a key leader in the domestic violence initiative, a walk a mile in her shoes and you literally did walk a mile in her shoes, so I don't know how you did that, but I do respect that you did that. that, but I do respect that you did that. I was at the seniors' center lunch, and I got to tell you that the faces, the expressions on the seniors, knowing that the police were there, and helping them to have an absolutely fabulous lunch, I should point out, by the way, generally, genuinely showed their appreciation. And I think it points out, as much as anything else, how involved in our community you are, and how you're looking for those that are needy to help out above and beyond the call of duty. And I think that is amazing. And again, on a personal note, I know my dad had a situation where we needed help from the police, and I was just amazed at the sensitivity of the officers involved in that situation. It wasn't life-threatening, it wasn't that type of thing, but it still took, especially with a senior, that type of sensitivity, and I think shows the amount of training that gets done, again, above and beyond your normal duties in terms of how to take care of our citizens, and how to appreciate what they're going through at the time. So, to you, your team, to the entire core of police officers that we have, thank you very much for not only your work today, but what you've been doing over the years for our community. Next up on our agenda, from the Director of Health, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Health. Resolve that funds be transferred from an increase in grant revenue in the amount of $10,463 to cover the cost of a cardiovascular disease prevention program focusing on policy and environmental change for citizens served by the Fairfield Health Department, and further resolve that the First Selectment is authorized to make, execute, and approve, on behalf of the town of Fairfield, any and all contracts or amendments thereof with the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health. These costs are 100% reimbursable by a October 1st, 2014, to a June 30th, 2015 State of Connecticut Preventive Health and Health Services Block Grant. May I have a motion to accept?
Yes, I make a motion to accept.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Clary?
Yes.
Do you want to come up to the podium and tell us a little bit about the grant, how we get it, and what we need to know?
So essentially, what we're proposing is determining a pilot bike share program, a library-style bike share program. We've been working with Nancy Curiarty at the Woods Branch Library, and we've talked about essentially using these funds from our Preventative Health Services Block Grant to provide the seed funds. We've discussed the issue with the state, submitted a proposal to them, they are in favor of it, have proved it, other entities and towns have used funds for similar, similar type efforts. But basically, we're looking to create a small 10 to 15 bike, bike share program in the town of Fairfield, where you go to the library, you can check out a bike. And so, why are we doing this? Well, a number of years ago, we did a community health assessment and a community health improvement plan. Part of that plan, and with that, we had hundreds of members of the town of Fairfield participate, First Selectman Tetra participated in doing a key informant interview, Kristin McCarthy-Wehde participated, and, and, you know, we had, we had over 400 Fairfield responses to our community health assessment. From that, we used, we invited lots of people to participate in a community health improvement plan, and that improvement plan identified that, you know, that we need to look at ways to enhance and integrate programs to promote active living. And so this is slightly different than what you think of a traditional bike share program in the sense of people using it to commute from one point to another in a city. This is really meant to promote, promote active living, to give somebody who may not have a bike, or may not have ridden a bike in a long time, a chance to check out a bike without having to go and buy one and store it and maintain it, but to, the chance to try a bike, and maybe hopefully be inspired to, to add that to their list of activities that they might consider doing themselves. In the past couple of years, we've strived three and a half miles of bike routes with this similar funding, in conjunction with the Fearful Bike Walk Coalition and the Fairfield Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Council. And then, so that's one of the reasons why we're doing it. In the Fairfield Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, under the Infrastructure Recommendations Number Eight, it says to support and expand proposed bike share program. And so this is our effort to, to, we sought out funds and a way to do that, and so we're trying to, to do that, to support this effort. So it's also, you know, part of the Health Department Strategic Plan, which we did last year, and we are looking to sort of do what we say we want to do, and do what the community says we should do. As, as a result of these efforts with our improvement plan and with our strategic plan, we did a survey of the town residents, we put it up on the town website in April, May, and June last year, and we had 351 responses. 81% of those responses were in favor of the town establishing this type of pilot, library-style bike share program. 70% of those who said, who said they support it, said they would actually use the program. 58%, nearly 60%, said they would use it from a few times a week to a few times a month. And 82% said they'd be willing to pay to, to use this bike program, with 62% saying they'd pay three to six dollars per use, they'd be willing to do that. And what I thought was great is that 63% of the people who said they would use it were 46 years of age and older. So it's, it really is the target audience that we're trying to shoot for is telling us that they support it, and they would use it, and they would take, take advantage of the program, and they're willing to pay for it. And so this is, essentially, we're going to, we're kind of going to work out the kinks. We've worked out liability issues with the risk manager of the town, and we're really looking to move forward and sort of buy some bikes and give it a try, and, and, and learn from it. Any questions?
Any questions on board?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Sam.
Sure.
You mentioned the liability, and you mentioned that you have a sign-off on that. Can you just talk more about that? Because I just want to make sure that we are good on that, because there's liability for injuries, obviously, accidents, there's, there's liability for theft of the bikes, or, you know, crimes that could be committed, if somebody was on the bike using it for something they shouldn't be. Have they looked at all the possibilities, or certain ones, and are you, is everyone, is the town attorney completely comfortable that we are good from an insurance, but, and a liability perspective?
Well, I, I ran it, took it to Eileen Cannelli, our risk manager, who talked to Surma, I believe it is?
Kirma.
Kirma, who, who discussed it with our, who's our carrier, and to explore the liabilities related to that. I trusted her judgment to pursue that aspect of it. We've looked at the liability forms used in several other communities within Connecticut, have come up with a draft one that would be used here, that somebody signing it out would initially first have to sign that liability waiver. So we've, we've addressed it to that extent.
Okay. Are there any follow-up documents that we could get sent to us, maybe the samples of that liability? I would just like to see them, you know, for information purposes, to try to understand the liability issue.
Yep, I can work with Eileen. I know we had sort of developed a draft document, but we can send that to you and get that to you tomorrow.
And my other question is, I know you're working in conjunction with the library to work out the details of the actual, you know, program, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any further information on that yet, as far as, you know, exactly how it would work, how it would work, where the bikes would be stationed, and for how long they could, just kind of the nuts and bolts of how they might implement it, at least as far as you know?
Yep, so, so the, the general thought is, seasonally, you know, sort of during the warmer months, you know, probably 10 months, or eight to 10 months out of the year, we'd have the bikes, we'd acquire bike share quality bikes. So we're not going down to Walmart and buying $200 bicycles, which require a lot of maintenance, but we would, would acquire bike share quality-level bikes, which are a little bit more expensive. They're designed to be left outside, they're designed not to have the chains fall off, they're designed not to get flat tires, all those types of things, they're designed not to rust and corrode. All those things would be part of the program. Simply, at this point, what we explored is that somebody would come in, they'd sign a liability waiver, they'd present their library card, and then they would be able to check out the bikes, we would have helmets and locks available to them, and we would provide those. And somebody would simply use the bike, pay whatever, whatever the final fee is for usage, and that would be for a certain time period, and they would return the bike and essentially check it back in.
Okay. Which all makes sense, and it sounds like a very worthy program, that's healthy and smart, and a great idea. I'm just questioning, I, I have some questions about the implementation of it, how it would work, how it would, how would, how would you use the library cards, would it be for residents only? But maybe those are more questioned, or questions more for the library themselves, and once we get a little closer to implementation.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we haven't come down firm on if you simply had a library card, you know, like, you know, I happen to live in Stratford, would I be able to check one out?
Things like that, right.
You know, we haven't come down firm on, no, we wouldn't be open to anybody using the bikes. It would really, we would want to look at, how are they being used, are they, is there availability there for everybody? If they're being well-used by Fairfield residents, then maybe we might want to just keep it just at that. But we're willing to sort of look at that as we, as we progress. As we said, it's a, it's a pilot study program, you know, we, I too don't want to take on something at this point that has too many variables that could go different ways, and responsibilities related to maintaining the bicycles and all that. We want to ensure that we study it first with a small program and see if it, if we want to, if in the future at some point, we want to expand that, or if we say, you know, we learned a lot, and there's variables that were here that we didn't consider, because large cities have had all sorts of successes and failures related to these types of programs, and we don't want to go down that path. That's why we're keeping it very small at this point, and just giving it a try.
Thank you.
Sheila?
Yeah, I, you answered some of my questions in, in your further discussion, which is, how are you going to track success of this program? What are your criteria for success? Is it, is it usage, is it a variety of people who are using the bikes, is it where they're going with the bikes, what they're doing with the bikes, how long they're riding the bikes, you know, so you can tie it back to cardiovascular health?
Yeah, and so what, what the variable available to, the metric available to us would be how many times they were checked out, you know, and, and the duration of that time. So that's what we would be looking at. We've considered sort of collecting an email address and following up with sort of an online survey to say, hey, you know, how, how many miles did you do? And there's, there's other options out there, and some of these bike share quality-style bikes, you can have, you know, GPS devices implanted on them, such that that can be tracked electronically, so that you can get, you know, miles used, calories burned, and all sorts of things. So there's some of the programs out there that have a software component and this GPS tracking, so that we can monitor that for success. But for, right now, in the pilot phase, what we're talking about is, is simply, how many times were the bikes checked out, and how many hours were they used?
I'm interested in that also, because it, these bikes are quite expensive. I mean, I looked at the initial cost of 10 to 12 bikes for $9,000, and I thought, you're kidding me. But I understand now that you, these are, these are special bicycles, but you would want to see the return on investment, or the value, you know, and measuring that. So my other question is, how, you're going to pilot this program, you know, what do you envision, a year, two years? What, what, what's the length that you'll use?
Yeah, it's, you know, again, we'll be, we'll be looking at it, you know, initially, we don't have a sort of a set time in terms of when we're going to do it. We're going to look at the success of it, and basically assess it probably at annual increments, and we'll probably be doing sort of smaller assessments to say what's working and what isn't, and making improvements to the program. We want to kind of pilot it, test it, and then, and make sure it's working, and then we'll sort of do a wider announcement of the program, launching of the program, and, and then we'll see what the true success of it is. But probably annually, we will look at it and say, all right, so what, what, how are we doing, and is it, is it something we want to continue with, or is this, this, you know, this, we'll keep it as it is for right now, and have, until, as long as the bikes last and are maintained and are safe, they'll be available at the library, and then we'll conclude the program if it's not working.
My only other thought is that because you are partnering with a library, it would be great to have programming around the bike share, you know, the link between activity and cardiovascular health, or something on biking, you know, so that you get that nice tie-in, and that you raise awareness that these bikes are out there to be borrowed.
Then if I might, in terms of the bikes themselves, first thought is maintenance, who does it? How do you, is somebody reviewing, inspect the bikes to make sure each day they're returned in good shape? How do you, how do we know when they're going to need that?
What's typically done with, with a lot of the programs is, is the individual signing out the bike will be asked to take a look at the bike, if it's in good working condition. If it's not in good working condition, to their standards, that they would notify the entity, the library, who checked it out, and we would, you know, simply probably put another lock on that bike, and wait until it can be maintained properly. So we have several bike stores in town, the plan is to, we have some funds for year one, small amount, for maintenance, and then the idea is that the funds generated from the usage fees would support maintenance of the bicycles. And so we would pursue an agreement with a local bike shop to maintain the bicycles in a, in a safe fashion.
Is there data from other programs, or other places that instituted this, to give you a feel for the amount of maintenance dollars, that you know your fees you're charging are high enough to cover that?
Yeah, they, you know, they generally said about $100 a year per bike is really what you should expect, to take care of flats, and, and a, and a once-a-year tune-up, and, you know, if a chain falls off. Again, these, that's, that's a fee based upon typical bikes, you know, but it's, it's a, these bikes are, are designed to be a little bit hardier, you know, these, these meet the, you know, in, in other countries outside of the United States, bikes are used as a, as a, as a transportation vehicle, and all bikes cost six or seven, $800. They're not of the quality that you find in Walmart or Kmart, that are designed to be, you know, purchased, and they're, they're, they're assembled by someone who has a short training course, and, and they require a little bit more maintenance. These bikes are of a, of a higher quality, designed to be less, need less maintenance. So we hope that those numbers will hold.
Are these the first of their bikes to be installed, or is this bike share bike, has that been used in other cities and programs?
The, this, this style, a library style, or a style where you go to an entity and you check out a bike, has been used. We've talked to a couple of programs, Rugged Cycles, which is one of the vendors that we've looked at to say, what are your style bikes? And we've looked at a couple others by Trek and other companies, to say, you know, how is this program working? So they, they present a variety of options. This, this program has worked in, in smaller settings, and that's why we're going with it, you know, in terms of that, because it's, it's, it's the sort of the lowest-cost entry option into a bike share program.
When you talk about bike share quality, but that's not a brand name, that's a generic category.
It's a generic term that I'm using to describe, this is not, you know, a $200 bicycle from Walmart. It's, it's a hardy aluminum frame, stainless steel components, some of the ones that we're looking at have, have, you know, airless tires, some of them don't have chains, some of them use drive shaft technology, some of them use chains similar to stainless steel moped chains that don't rust. So those, those are the things that bring up the cost.
Are you looking at whether we should buy these or lease these?
I haven't found an option related to leasing the bicycles. I haven't, I haven't seen that. Most of the, most of the companies out there that, that, that promote and sell bike share-related bicycles and equipment, you know, the kiosks and things like that, I haven't come across a leasing option. I'm trying to work with B-Cycle right now to get some more information about their program, which is a Trek-based, Trek bicycle-based bike share program that's finding a lot of success in, in, in a lot of areas.
Are there any other communities in Connecticut that have a bike share program in place?
I believe Simsbury is one. I think I have the, Simsbury, we have a lot of their waiver information. Bridgeport is exploring it right now as well. And I'm trying to think if there's, there's another, the, I believe Hartford is pursuing it as well, because I think the, our grant authority said, you should talk to these people in Hartford, because they're doing, they're doing the same with the program.
In terms of working with the library to do this, a couple of things come on. One, have, have they signed off on this, their board aware, they're, do they know?
Yep. This was, you know, essentially, I had this idea a number of years ago, and have been just sort of gradually researching it to, to see if it, if, I wanted to understand all the, all the failures that have happened out there, all the, the, you know, the bike share programs where it's, they got donated bikes from people around the community, and they got volunteers to support and maintain the bikes, and train some teenagers to do it, and a lot of those fell apart and didn't work, because after a couple of years, the motivation fades, and the bikes get old, and, and we looked at all the sort of failure programs out there, and so we're, you know, I was looking at that at the same time I was advised by folks on the Fearful Bike Walk Coalition, that Nancy was exploring the idea as well, and she was exploring this, you know, hey, why don't we have some bikes donated, and we'll have them at the library for people to, to ride. And so we met several times, we've met with Eileen Cannelli several times, and have explored this and said, this is, this is, you know, to, to give it a try, this is probably the least cost, and, you know, this is before we even had a grant. We said, you know, let's look at how we can do this, and maybe coddle together some funds to do it as, on a small scale, and this grant came available to make us do it maybe slightly bigger than we were originally intending, but to provide bikes at, at two branches of the library. You know, this, this would be, we think, a good opportunity to give that a try.
Any other, you know, ongoing costs over the years? Are there budgets that, from other programs that have been started that we can look at? I mean, you mentioned you had some of the lives- I mean, you mentioned you had some of the liability paperwork. Do they have an annual budget? Can we see kind of what some of their costs are to help manage that?
Yeah, I mean, it varies on, you know, there's, there's, there are some programs like, like ours, like the ones that we're proposing. I don't have sort of hard numbers on that. We're looking at, you know, the numbers that we're getting regarding, you know, the sort of $100 per year per bicycle is what you should expect on maintenance, is from some of the bike-share, the larger-scale bike-share, you know, companies that we've been engaged in discussions with about, you know, how much do your bikes cost, and how does this work, and what mistakes should we look to avoid? And, and so, you know, I don't have those numbers in terms of, you know, I know, you know, lots of the larger-scale ones have had all sorts of problems, and that we're trying to avoid that with, you know, the expensive kiosks and, and the technology demands of those, and the infrastructure costs of connecting them to power and all that.
And the library can do this with existing resources, they don't have to add staff part-time or full-time?
No, this is similar to checking out a book, you know, that, that the bikes would sit outside on their existing bike racks. They would be, you know, make, you know, the, we would work with local vendors to, if a bike needed maintenance, to pick up the bike and take, you know, conduct the maintenance and return it back to the facility. But existing resource, that's our plan, is to, not to have to do anything to infrastructure-wise, but just simply acquire some bikes, put in a safe place, a system similar to checking out a, a book, maybe with a few extra steps, like a liability waiver and a helmet and some, you know, bowling shoe-style sanitization spray and, and, you know, and try to work it that way for the, for this phase of it.
Doug, I look on here, and I'm seeing bicycles, biking equipment. I'm not seeing bike racks as a cost on it.
There's existing bike racks at the both libraries.
All right, there's space on those, because if these aren't used, they will chew up a significant number of spaces on the bike racks.
Yeah, my understanding from talking to the library that they have space, and we talked about buying five to, five, you know, having, you know, five to six bikes at each, at each location. And we've also talked to the senior center about if we, if we're able to get the full 15, to put a few down there, and they would have a similar type of system there where they could sign out, a senior there, visiting the senior center could sign out a bike and go for a ride down there as well.
Have we looked at the issue of bike theft? We've had some well-publicized thefts occur at the Metro Station, then other places around town. How would that be handled, or what's the?
Well, the current thought related to this phase of it, just the pilot study, is that, you know, we would, you know, work with people to say, you know, there's a responsibility to lock it adequately and secure it, and we haven't come down hard on saying, if a bike gets stolen while you have it checked out, you're responsible for that. That is a possibility. But we've also said, well, maybe we'll look at the usage fees and see, you know, if that can support acquiring bikes. If somebody, you know, filed a police report and said, you know, my bike, I parked it here and now it's gone, and they went through the process of legitimately reporting the bike as stolen, we might work with them to say, you know, to have some forgiveness in that regard. But we haven't come down and saying, you know, if the bikes disappear, we're not going to charge people who lose them.
Given there have been a number of these programs in some larger communities than ours, has theft been an issue anywhere with these?
It's never, it's never been raised as a significant issue. It really comes down to the, you know, the quality of the locks, and that's why we put in, you know, a fair amount of money to buy high-quality locks that can, that are very difficult to, to get, break, you know, and get into and steal the bikes. And so that's, that's how we're trying to work around that.
Now, and since this is a pilot, kind of building on Ms. Marmian's question, normally pilots are done over a specific time period, there are specific criteria in order to determine what success is. And I know in many health department initiatives, you have the same type of approach on that.
Yeah.
Is there a reason we're not using that type of formal approach of start, end date, specific criteria in order to evaluate the success of this program?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I guess the, I'm supposing the reason is, is that we, you know, it's, it's been a theory up until this point where we actually have funding, well, we still don't have funding yet, depending on the vote today. So we haven't walked down, that far down the path, but we will, prior to implementation, the plan is to say, you know, what are, what are our metrics? What, what, what do we determine, determine as success? And so, you know, that's what we will look at in terms of, once we have funding, we'll, we'll convene again with, with interested individuals that are, you know, want to see this program launch, and we'll meet with them to say, okay, what are, what are the metrics? We'll determine that together as a group.
And then from a standpoint of, of any costs, you've got a basic budget here, which is not bad, seems to cover the cost from that standpoint. However, what if, you know, we end up losing lots of locks or lots of helmets, or what is the, which department covers that? Health Department, the library?
Well, I suppose we would, we would talk about it and see, you know, at, at that point. You know, the idea is that this would be a self-sustaining program, that usage fees would cover costs related to the bicycles and, and maintaining them. That would include, you know, locks and helmets and maintenance costs, and so that's what we're, we're hoping would, would cover all those things.
And what, what fees are you talking about? What's it going to cost me to rent a bike?
Well, that, you know, again, we, we put out a survey, we haven't come down to a definite number. We were going to have that committee kind of come down. The initial goal would probably be to have it be very affordable in the beginning, and then maybe dollar up a few for, for usage rates. Right now, we're talking, you know, somewhere in the range of three to six dollars, three to six dollars for a three-to-four hour block, so maybe you'd get for, for two, two cycles in a day of people renting the bicycle, you know, whether it be eight to 12, 12 to four, something along those lines.
And it occasionally happens with books, but happened with me all the time with movie rentals, what happens if I return them late?
Yeah, again, we would look at similar types, we'd look at fees related to that.
Is there any reason for the library itself to be open when the bikes are returned?
Well, at this point, what we've talked about is, is matching the library's hours at this point, is that, the only way you can check out a bike at this point is to actually go into the library and go up to the desk and say, I want to check out a bike. So we would match the library's hours. The only thing, other variable that we've talked about, and again, we've simply just talked about it, is, is for those people, if we want to explore the commuter option, that if somebody was to come off the train, go to the library and say, hey, I want to check out a bike to ride home, that we might have an overnight sort of discount rate that as long as the bike is back by eight in the morning, as long as the library is open, that that would be a possibility as well. So, but we would look at matching the library's hours.
Yeah, because the other thought would be if this is, in essence, going to help with, I'd say, the downtown experience anyway. Someone might buy a bike, do some shopping, go out to dinner, and then perhaps not finish dinner on time to get back, was the question. And where we have a, you know, drop box for books, do we have a drop box for bike helmets? That type of thing.
It's a good point. I haven't, you know, we haven't researched that, you know, that aspect of it. I mean, that's one thing, I, you know, we really haven't looked at that in terms of returning it after. The initial thought was, you have to have the bike back by the time the library was closed. You could, you could probably fit the key in the lock slot, you know, it would be, you know, leaving the helmet on the bicycle probably would be the option.
I think that does, if any, further questions from the board?
This is, I'm assuming for 18-plus years old? I mean, there's a, the bikes will be for adults?
The, the bikes, the bike-share style bikes are, you know, generally, it's, it's a height range, typically, they're typically five feet to 6'1" is sort of the range of the seat post, and go up and down, so it would be folks in that range. And again, we've initially thought about rolling it out. There was some thought about having some kids' bikes there, Nancy had talked about, but for these ones, we would say, these are adult bikes. The idea is to get, to get people, the issue, what, in our survey, there was some places to provide comments, and a lot of people said, you know, I buy my kids' bikes for, you know, $29 or $40 at Walmart, but I don't have a bike. And we throw them in the car, and then we drive down to a park or a beach area, and then we let the kids ride, but I don't have a bike. And so one of the options, this is, they would say, well, we can park near the library, go get a bike, we all go down to the, ride down in that area together. So, but initially, these bikes are, the proposal was just for adults, for these bike-share quality bikes.
In terms of placing them at the library, I guess it, to some degree, that makes sense in terms of, you've got to pick up your helmet, you've got your keys, your lock. However, if people are taking trains into town, you know, they don't have cars, they'd like to consider other options. And if we're not ready to have an alternative bike rental station at the, the train station yet, have we considered any signage at the train station to point people towards the library to let them know that this option is available?
Well, you know, that, the, we, you know, we can consider it. The idea of having this commuter option is something to be, that is sort of a, a couple dialogues about, you know, but that would be one of the options to say, bike shares are available.
Yeah, less of a commuter option, more a, I'm coming into Fairfield, I take the train in to go downtown, but the restaurant I want to go to is a little further than I'd like to walk. Is there, you know, so I'd like to be able to do the bike, or I'd like to get over to the Fairfield Museum, which perhaps might be a little further than the average person would like to walk, so that I might use a bike to do that, or to explore further than just the, the walkability along the Post Road.
Well, you know, there, once, once, you know, once we've launched the program, done some initial evaluations of what's, what's working and what isn't, then, as we said, we plan to sort of announce it on a broader scale, have a grand opening, if you will, and then we would have it try to work through the entities that would be the target audiences for, for that type of use, you know, working through, whether it be the, you know, Parking Authority to get, you know, information to the, to people, and maybe in a slip in their annual renewal that, hey, you know, just so you know, we have bikes available, and also just promoting it through press releases and the website, and the ways we do, normally do things, our Facebook and Twitter pages, to get the word out about it.
Okay. Any further questions from the board?
Just a couple. Thank you. On the grant itself, is there a timeframe the grant is available to us?
Yeah, it's, it's.
I know it says June 30th on it, but is that when it's available till?
You know, that's, June 30th is when we have to expend all funds, so we have to.
So it's a, so it's a grant that's open now and is open until June 30th, but you need to spend the money, you would need to implement the program and spend the money prior to June 30th to utilize it?
To utilize it, yeah.
Okay.
So it's, right now, we've submitted the proposal to the state, the state has accepted our proposal, and has sent back a contract to this town of Fairfield, and the resolution here is authorizing the selectmen to sign that contract.
Now, what was submitted to the state?
We submitted electronically a proposal about the program. Mike and I met and discussed the issue, and then once we, you know, came to an understanding of that, we were given permission to submit the concept of the program to the state. We submitted that to the state, they came back and said, we like the idea, you know, and here is, and then sent it, a few weeks later, sent us a contract. It says, you know, here's, here's the contract to, similar to what we did with bike-share, the bike lane striping. We proposed it to the state, the state said, love the idea, here's a contract to do that. We went before the boards to get approval, and, and then we executed that grant and worked with Public Works and Engineering to, to do that.
Okay. This is a, this is a worthy program. I happen to like the concept and I like the idea. It's, it's rather new, it's certainly outside our normal type of offering for the library, and I definitely commend your department and the library for working together to put something like this together. It is relatively new, and I'm trying to wrap my arms around it, how it's going to work, and many of the questions that, that the three of us have had. Would it be possible to get a copy of that proposal? I didn't, I didn't see it, and typically, you wouldn't send something like that to us.
No, typically, we submit the 14 points.
The one that went to the state? I mean, since, since the, this is so unique, and I, and there's a lot of questions, without holding you up, because I don't want to do that, of course, but there are some open questions. If, if we were to take a step back and get some of these questions answered, maybe take a look at the proposal, would something like that be possible?
You know, it's, it's, the delays would, you know, I haven't proceeded down the road of actually, you know, contracting vendors and potential maintenance, bike stores that would do the maintenance facilities. I haven't walked down that path too far yet, because we don't have the funds in hand. So delays would delay that and sort of shorten the timeframe for, for effective implementation.
Let's just, if I might, let's just take the timeline right now. If this board approves it today, it would go to the Board of Finance in February.
No, this, this, the resolution requested by the state is from the governing authority, not the legislative authority. So this board would be the board that would have the final say on this.
Okay, so there would not be subsequent Board of Finance or RTM hearings on this?
My, my, how I've been advised by Eileen Cannelli, who read the resolution, she said, if it, the resolution requires the governing body to approve, a resolution from the governing body to approve the first selectman to sign the contract, and that, she said, that that does not require it to go before the Board of Finance and the RTM.
Okay.
I would, accepting that for the moment, if this goes forward today, I would still like the town attorney to take a look at that, to make sure that's consistent with our charter. Realize that's all the state may require, but our charter may require additional approvals to make this move forward.
Okay.
So if we could just confirm that for the moment, okay, accepting that, but subject to this board, if it were to go forward today, I'd still like to get that reviewed, to determine whether it goes to the next board or not.
Most definitely.
But getting, so that would impact the timing, then it basically would just be, this would be the only board that would need to do that.
As I was advised.
If that's the case.
Yeah, if that's the case, as I've been advised, that this would be the only board that needs to give you the authority to sign the contract.
Yeah, I just like the, given our normal approval process seems to take the other boards into play, I definitely would like to get a, the opinion from our town attorney on the approval process. I, we'll have no trouble, or problem with, with Ms. Cannelli's interpretation of what the state grant says. I just want to make sure that's consistent with our charter. Any further questions from the board at this point, or is it okay for public comment?
Sure.
Does any, anyone from the public like to offer a comment at this point? All right, seeing none, back to the board.
I, I like the concept, and I really like the fact that there's a grant attached to it, so thank you very much for that. And to, to clarify my question, I, I know it's possible for us to delay this. My question was, if this were to be delayed by a couple of weeks, would that, you know, put the, your ability to get the grant and the program in place by June 30th, and that's four or five months out?
I think we can do it. You know, it's, the, the question, I would have to talk to the state and see, you know, I don't know if the state has a drop-dead date that they want the signed contract back by.
That's probably part of the answer.
We're already late, this is, you know, late, late in the fiscal year for them, so I can check with them, but I, I highly doubt it would create any significant impact on us proceeding.
Okay. I just, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I would just like to say, I, it's a very creative approach to decreasing the amount of cardiovascular disease. I think there's got to be an educational component that's married to this, so that people understand why this grant money was being used specifically for this. So that's number one. The other thing is that I would like to hear back from you, once, if, if we go forward with this and approve this grant today, I'd like to hear back from you in terms of those, those criteria for success that we had mentioned, and more about the timeline, and more about the nuts and bolts of how this might work, everything from, you know, dropping off that helmet, to what are the fees, to what are the, you know, overdue fees, or whatever, however you want, because I think we're going to, I want to, I want to see, see where this is going and kind of measure it, you know, as you go along. So I'd like to hear back from you on, on all of those points.
If, now, if I can build on that, one of the questions, as we tried, we've tried kind of pilots in, in different areas, and sometimes they work and sometimes they don't. I guess the question that comes up is, is let's assume success for a moment. You know, it's a year from now, we say, this is the right thing to do, we're reaching a point where we either want to expand it, or, based on usage, replace some of the bikes we have, but, but what do we do then? What's the, the vision for how to fund a successful program?
Well, my vision is that if we can demonstrate success, as opposed to what's happened in a lot of the big cities and other areas where bike-share programs have dwindled or not been successful, or have been run excessive over, if we can demonstrate success, I think we would be able to find a grant. You know, I would never propose this as, as, you know, using town dollars to do this, to do a bike-share program. I think we could look to, to other sources out there to say, to secure grants, you know, Bridgeport received millions of dollars for exploratory bike-share program grants and have not launched theirs yet. You know, and so I think there's funds available out there to support these types of programs, and we would look at pursuing that, and saying, we've demonstrated in a pilot sense a successful[1792.71] a successful program, and now maybe we want to take the next step, whether it be kiosks, you know, where it's, the program sort of maintains itself, you don't have to go to the library, you know, or whatever approach we want to go next, or more locations where you can sign out a bike, that type of thing. But we would pursue grant funds for that. If it's successful, I think we can secure that.
All right. Any further comments from the board?
Yes, please. Again, I like the idea, but I think, I'd like to also hear from the library, how they would partner with you to implement it, and how it might affect them from a staffing perspective or a budgeting perspective, and, you know, just get their view on it. And, and in addition, we did ask a lot of questions here, most, many of which you were able to answer, but there still are some open questions about how it would operate, and, you know, what it would cost, and how long you would rent it for, the overnight thing, and there were many of those questions that, while I understand as a pilot, and you're not going to have an answer for every question, maybe some more clarity on some of the questions would get me more comfortable. If, if, so if there's any way to take a couple weeks and get some of that information, I can certainly find myself being supportive of the program and the concept. I just know a little bit less right now that I'm comfortable knowing and voting, especially if it doesn't even go beyond us. If it's just us three deciding and the Board of Finance or the RTM doesn't even have a crack at it to ask a question that we might not think of, if that is the case, so...
Is there a motion?
I would move to postpone this to a date certain.
Be the 21st?
Of January 21st, if that's acceptable.
Second.
Okay. Under the heading of discussion, Mr. Cleary, does that give you enough time to?
I think so. If I understand...
Work through some of the questions.
Criteria for success, timeline, more about the fees, more about the proposal to the state information.
If you could.
How the library will be impacted, the budget of that. Was there any other?
Any educational component that's married with this?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we, we do public health education every day, and so we would simply integrate this into what we do and say...
Absolutely.
To our Diabetes Support Group and our Diabetes Prevention Program, say, hey, and now, you know, if you, if you haven't ridden a bike in 20 years, guess what? If you go rent one now in Fairfield for, for affordable rate, give it a try, see if it's something for you, if this is a way that you might improve your activity level. And so, it'll, it'll integrate itself naturally into all the programs that we do. It's part of, part of what we do. Anytime we do, you know, the same way we did with the Bike Share lanes, you know, to, to promote that in all we do. And, and again, some of these clarity, I, these lack of clarity, I get it. My goal is not to, to, to create Sands Cleary's Bike Share program. It's to, to secure funding, to develop a program with people that are interested. And so the next phase would be, once we secure funding, to say, let's get all the people that want this to be a success, and put us in a room and say, okay, let's hammer out all these issues that are sort of gray still.
I certainly appreciate that. So anything you could do along the operational nuts and bolts of how it might work or will work would, would be beneficial.
Okay.
So if it, the item before us is to postpone this to a date certain, any further comments on the, that motion? Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Sands, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Cleary.
Thanks.
Here you go. And next up, the item before us, from the Flood and Erosion Control Board, to hear a report on the flood control plan for the Fairfield Beach and South Pine Creek areas. This was an item that really came out of Storm Sandy.
Oh, thank you.
We had, one of the tasks I had assigned to Mr. Michelangelo was to take a look at what worked, what didn't, and what we need to do. This has dovetailed into work that the ongoing comments and work from the Flood and Erosion Control Board, and specifically came to a, I'm going to say, bigger issue, or certainly, and a request for lots of information concerning this, want to come around to looking at the Penfield Pavilion project that has gone before various boards. So the Flood and Erosion Control Board put their thoughts down in writing, working closely with Mr. Michelangelo, and we've asked them to come here before us, to kind of fill us in on what their thoughts are, and, and so from our standpoint, I think we want to look at this as a draft plan for feedback. I would look at the Flood and Erosion Control Board, though we haven't talked about this officially in terms of timing, to perhaps hold a public session on this later to, and inform our public about what else is going on with that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Grauer and Mr. Michelangelo.
And we're going to have a PowerPoint presentation, if the, which is going to, is set up to shine right over there.
Is that, are you doing that first?
Mr. Grauer's going to give a short introduction, so we could, he could give the introduction.
I can, sir.
Obviously, so we'll do that, we'll do it like that.
Everybody might be better off.
Yep.
On behalf of Flood and Erosion, I'm going to just read this short introduction to you. On behalf of this Flood and Erosion Control Board and Public Works Department, who worked hard, or the working arm, to fight flooding, I thank you for the opportunity to explain the reasons Fairfield continues to be flooded by coastal storms, what has been done to mitigate that flooding, and what we are proposing for further actions. The number one question presented to us by the residents in the floodplain is, how do we keep this from happening again? This has kept us focused on our, on flood prevention. The Flood and Control Board is responsible for flood prevention, both inland and coastal, as well as erosion. Our responsibilities are big. However, tonight, we will focus on what has been, what has been done, what we are doing, and what we are recommending to be done to prevent coastal flooding. Tonight's presentation, prepared by Joe Michelangelo's staff and the Flood and Erosion Control Board, will be presented by myself, Dick Mikowski, our Vice Chairman, and Joe, Director of Public Works. A written report and copies of all of the slides you are about to see are in the binders and are available to the press and the public at our website, www.fairfield.org/fcecb. We have cards available to anyone who wants them, with instructions how to obtain a copy online, and we encourage the public present to pick those up and share those with their neighbors. We look at Fairfield's coastline as divided into three, three segments, Southport Beach, the Primary Beach, Ash Creek, and Roost River. Our focus tonight is only on what we call the Primary Beach area between Riverside Drive and South Pine Creek Road, where the greatest amount of coastal flooding continues to take place, affecting the most people, property, and town's critical infrastructure, including this building. The conceptual plan, which we will be presenting, contains many of the action matrix contained in the National Hazard Flood Mitigation Plan, updated and published by the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council, adopted by the RTM in June of 2014. Our conceptual plan has also been reviewed by the Army Corps of Engineers, who has given their blessing, and as you will see, the Army Corps has even offered to take the lead in one of our proposed projects. A year ago, the Public Works Department applied for a single $27 million grant to cover the whole project, which was denied due to the dollar size. We were unaware of that at the time when we applied. Because of this, we have segmented our plan into 12 segments, and applied for smaller grants on these segments where possible, which you will learn more about in a moment. Should you have questions as we present the history or a recommendation for flood prevention, please bring them up as they come to mind. We will, what we will cover tonight is the result of long hours on, on part of the Flood and Erosion Control Board volunteers and the Public Works staff. We have tried to keep it simplified, but because of its size, it can become overwhelming. The enemy is Long Island Sound. Our recommendation is to confront the enemy at the shoreline, protecting the greatest number of properties. Keep in mind that our floodplain, our floodplan, excuse me, is a little like completing a jigsaw puzzle. Each piece added to the puzzle diminishes flooding. We don't stop the, we don't stop flooding entirely until the puzzle is completed. Our recommendation is to protect against a 100-year storm, or 1% chance of a storm, and we recommend that each piece of the puzzle be completed to the, to that area, to FEMA's recommended elevations are greater, so that further actions will not have to be taken to complete each segment. Our recommendation is tonight to protect against a 100-year storm, and we remind you that Sandy was a 50-year storm, which occurs in a 2% chance. I will now turn this over to Joe Michelangelo, who will give you a quick history of the lessons on flooding, followed by a brief, followed by Dick Mikowski, who will give you a brief commentary on each of the 12 segment sections of the flood protection plan. Along the way, we will enlighten you on the cost of each segment and the results on our grant applications. You can follow along in the book list that you have there, and it is quite involved. Please feel free to ask questions or follow up with them. You can write to the board anytime. We'd be more than happy to, to field your questions.
I'll set up the PowerPoint.
Okay.
I think we should adjourn.
Adjourn.
I'll proceed.
I'll start the presentation, and as Chairman Grauer said, I'll hand it over to Dick Mikowski. About halfway through, this is the area of Fairfield. This is a flood inundation map, and this is how the, the whole nation is categor, categorized for flooding, and they have what category one would look like, what category two would look like, category three and category four. And that's largely a proxy for elevation in our town. So this area over here, which you see the yellow mustard category, is what a category one hurricane would do in Fairfield, the area that would cover it. And, so that's what the yellow mustard color, and then, as you get to the next orangish color, is what a category two would do. And if I could use the pointer there, so this is the dividing line of where category one is and where category two is. And by and large, even though Sandy was not a category one, it rose pretty close to that border between the yellow and the orange. And you see Independence Hall, located over here, where we had our water right in our backyard over there. Sherman School was covered. Our Water Pollution Control Authority was, was full of water, and basically it came pretty much up the Reef Road, pretty close to the 711 there. Didn't quite get to the, to any of the orangish areas. And the only deviation for that, when I say it reached the category one levels, the only places where it didn't, it didn't go in the South Pine Creek area, because that's protected, and it didn't go in the upper reaches over here, which is basically the traffic circle by McDonald's and the Circle Diner. But otherwise, Fairfield was flooded approximately to the level of a category one storm. This map shows, this is a map of the Connecticut coastline, which is a U.S. Army Corps map, hurricane surge inundation map. And as Chairman Grauer said, this is the limits of our study, which is basically Pine Creek Road and Ash Creek. This is a map of the Connecticut shoreline from the Sawgatuck River in Southport to the Paquannic and Bridgeport. So it shows the whole Connecticut coastline, and even though we know that there's areas of Campo Beach and Sawgatuck and Greens Farm and Black Rock which flood, you can see the amount of area of this inundation in our area here is probably greater than all the other ones combined along our section of Long Island Sound. But this is our study area, like Mr. Grauer said, that we're looking at over there. So important to know how Fairfield interacts with Long Island Sound. So what Fairfield has, and this system has existed since probably about the 50s, one of the things that we've done a wonderful job on over the years is keeping our salt marshes viable. A lot of towns along the Connecticut coast, and I'll use East Haven and Branford where I grew up and raised, a lot of communities cut off their salt marshes from Long Island Sound. They blocked off the saltwater intrusions, they created fill, they changed the land, and that has proven over the years not to be beneficial. They have, you know, the, the area, once you cut it off from, from the natural flow of water, you change the salt marshes, you have dieback, mud flats, all kinds of problems. So we have an excellent system where the flow is controlled by a series of tide gates and dikes. So all of our marsh areas over here, which you see in these areas over here, salt water is not cut up, cut off from them, all the way up to like where Fairfield Lumber used to be over here, and on this side in the Marina, it's allowed to go up Turney Creek and several areas over there. Even behind Pine Creek goes all the way under Reef Road, under Roland Road. So all those marshes that you see over there are viable salt marshes that get saltwater intrusion twice a day during the high tide. Tide comes in, tide comes out, tide comes out, twice a day, provides great benefits. It's an environmental example of how communities should protect, preserve, and maintain their salt marshes. So this system works outstanding, 364 days a year, does the job. This is just an example of what a, what a tide gate looks like. So there, some of them have floats on them, but basically they're non-mechanical devices, they're passive, they're just basically cast iron devices hung on a hinge. Some of them have floats on, but basically, they allow water to go into our salt marshes at a regulated rate. We don't want to flood the salt marshes, we don't want to flood private property or town properties, but it is allowed to go in there, it doesn't surge them, it's regulated in there by these passive devices, and it comes out the same way. Other example of how we are protected normally is the whole, as most of you know, the whole area south of Fairfield Beach Road is what's known as geologically a typical barrier beach or barrier island. And when I say barrier island, 100 years ago, you could, you, you could go from Ash Creek through the marshes all the way out Pine Creek. It was once connected. So our barrier island there, and this is from a Outer Banks, North Carolina website, but our barrier beach was formed the same way as Fire Island, New York, or Outer Banks, or Clearwater Beach, or Miami Beach. They're typical, built up barrier beaches, barrier islands. And with ours, this over here, which is a marsh, yes, the land behind our beaches, which is Lally Boulevard and Roland and Penfield Road, once upon a time were marshes. They were filled, but now there's land over there. So that's how geologically our town is set up, and once again, it protects, it protects from both ends, from the flanks and from the start. But, as I said, it works 364 days a year, but when we get flooding, one of the things that happens is we get surges into our, both the Ash Creek area and into Pine Creek. And when we have the heavy surges, the, the tide gates and dike system, like I said, was designed to protect and allow some water in. Well, during the heavy storm surges, most of them get overtopped. Water gets in through the flanks, through the, through the sides, gets through the system, over the system, inundates our marshes. And also, not only do we have the intrusion from the both flanks, through Pine Creek and through Ash Creek, a lot of our, our barrier beaches, as the waves get higher, overtopp the barrier beaches in all kinds of locations, from the Marina to the Fairfield Beach Club, to Penfield Pavilion, all the private properties, basically from the Darrell Pavilion going west. This is a photo superimposed in this location. This was taken, I'm not sure how good it shows up, but this was taken earlier in December, the first Tuesday in December. We had some rains. This is a picture on Fairfield Beach Road, right about over there. So I'm on Fairfield Beach Road over there. You could, the elevation of Pine Creek there, even during the somewhat minor... You could, the elevation of Pine Creek there, even during the somewhat minor storm, was maybe six inches below Fairfield Beach Road during a minor unnamed storm that didn't cause any damage. It was probably within six inches of coming up on Fairfield Beach Road. This is basically from the Darrell Pavilion looking west at the private properties. And once again, it didn't overtop any of these properties, but even during that minor storm, it's, it's pretty close to these private seawalls that the houses build over there. This one, once again, didn't show up, doesn't show up too great in the dark, but this is the old boat ramp at the marina, the one that's closest to the parking area, and it looks like, it looks like a flat parking lot, because the, the, the water level is probably about six inches lower than the, than the, the actual parking lot. So during a heavier storm, it would continue going up, up, up in the ramp and flood that area and eventually go into the, you know, the Jennings Parking Lot, the Sand Castle, the areas behind Oyster Road, et cetera.
All three of those photos were from December?
Correct, from the first Tuesday in December during the rounds. And once again, you know, I didn't come out at the, you know, I know for a fact that this one over here came up much higher. I probably took that in the morning, and the peak was probably about 1:00 in the afternoon. So these were taken the same day, but I obviously wasn't at the peak at every location at the ultimate time. This is, hopefully this gives an example of what we have to fight during our storms. Now, this is a NOAA graph. There is not a tide Long Island Sound gauge in Fairfield, so this is from Bridgeport. So ours varies slightly, because we're whatever, five miles down. So our elevations aren't the same, but this is a good proxy for what we experience in Fairfield, and we can only get this in Greenwich Mean Time, which is a couple hours different, so it's probably three hours different on the scale. But I'll talk through this graph and how it affects us. So the blue line over here is the astronomical tides, what a tide behaves like every day during its diurnal cycle, and tides could be predicted. So that blue line, we could predict that blue line for the next 19 years, and then another 19 years it starts another cycle, and then another 19 years it starts another cycle. So that, the blue line's predictable, what it's going to do every day. But that, once again, that blue line is subject to variations due to weather conditions. So during Sandy, beginning, once again, we only go back 1028, as you can see during Sandy, we started getting a little higher, a little higher, a little higher. So even before the day of the storm, the other three tides were even higher than normal. And once again, this line indicates what mean high water is, approximately 3.2. Here's mean low water, I think it's about 3 or something like that. We have the exact number somewhere. What this blue, what this red line is, is the differentiation from normal. So you can see even on a couple tides beforehand, it was about a foot higher than normal, two feet higher than normal. Over here, it was two and a half feet higher than normal. So a couple interesting things about this graph, what this did. So this was the first high tide during Sandy on the 29th, which was about noon time. So that was a high tide, and you can see where it was at 7.5 feet, and this is where the predicted tide was. So even though at 6:00 PM that night, even though the tide, it was a low tide and the tide went out around dinnertime on the 29th, you could see that it was still basically higher than a normal, the low tide was higher than a normal high tide would have been. And then we had our peak around midnight, and then it, probably about 10:30, and then it went down again. And a couple interesting points where, if you dissect this, you get an idea how Sandy could have been even worse than it was. The tide where Sandy occurred, you can see where it was, it was supposed to be just a normal high tide. Well, if it happened, if Sandy happened to hit a couple side, tide cycle is different. If, for instance, it came at this tide, this tide would have been about a foot higher just normally. So that would have been a little higher. And I'll point to this red line, which is the differentiation. You can see where our, where our highest deviation from the normal tide was, was a couple hours before the peak. So if you, if you sort of line that up, the highest deviation was when the tide was supposed to be at the lowest, not at the lowest point, but sort of on the rise. So it wasn't quite at the lowest, it wasn't at the high, but it was probably about a third of the way up the climb. So if, if this red was aligned with this blue, our green would have been much higher, and this situation would have been much, much worse. So I think this is a pretty telling, even though there's a lot of stuff here, I think it's pretty telling, and it gives us a good idea of how Sandy affected us and how storm affects us. And I'm going to, I'm going to come back to this slide in a couple slides forward, because this is not only important of how we get flooded, but it's also telling on how Fairfield drains. This, I have a hard copy of this map here, which is a little better. This is an engineering diagram, which, which shows the lay of the land of Fairfield, and this is the, the beach area here with our lots and our houses imposed. And what this does, this does a slice right up Penfield Road, and it's an engineering diagram, but this shows the profile of the barrier beach, the dip as you go beyond the barrier beach. So Fairfield Beach Road is a low point, basically a low point where the old marsh used to be, and it comes back up here. So what the blue line indicates, the blue line is what a flood zone elevation of 11 is. This is a close-up of that. Once again, here's our barrier beach at the scale that is, approximately eight. This is where our flood zone of 13 is. This is where our, so the flood, the V-zone is at the beach. Afterwards, it drops down, but this is real elevations of what an 11 looks like on the grade of Fairfield here. And we'll talk about this later. One of the existing problems also with our drainage system downtown, this is approximate level of where our drainage system is all over the area over here. So the flow line of our pipes anywhere around the beach area are in the area of, you know, at elevation 1, 2, 3, somewhere around there. And the tide gates, if we go back to the tide gates slide where I had all the tide gates shown, which is these, all these tide gates are inlets and outlets. Well, those, the elevation of those vary, but some of them are elevation zero, elevation one, elevation two. So on our, on our map here, our outlet where the pipe eventually discharges to, to salt waters is underwater every single day, twice a day. So our drainage system does not work, pick a time, whether it's 30% of the time, 35% of the time, 40% of the time, it does not work normally under normal conditions. Well, this pipe is over here, this is a proposed if, and this is part of a plan, and we'll get into this. If we had a stormwater pump station here, where we had basically a pit, we could change the whole nature of our storm drainage system by getting better, better flow to that, but we could touch on that later. So when Fairfield gets flooded, once again, our slide from before, area inundates the, the area, as I showed on the engineering picture. This area gets filled, our beach neighborhood turns into a saltwater lake. Some pictures, which you've all seen, those are different press photos. This is aerial photo, which is two days after Sandy. That's our wastewater treatment plant. Here is Vets Field. Difficult to see, but you can see, this is Quincy over here, the intersection of Quincy and Reef. And two days later, even though we rented the biggest pumps we ever saw in our life, the water was still past Bud's Deli, almost to Quincy. So using this slide again, and like I said, I mentioned that we don't drain during, during normal high tides. So if you look on this diagram here, where I said our drainage outlets are all in the area of one, so to speak, you can tell that basically on these diagrams here, we, we only drain when the tide is in these areas here. So that's the only, we, we drain between the high tides, we don't drain at the high tides. So the more, the higher this is, so basically during Sandy, we, the only time we could drain naturally was in this little gap here, in this gap there. So our system wasn't designed to drain storm water once it gets, doesn't drain it during normal storms very efficiently. During a massive intrusion, it's not going to work naturally at all. This just shows the scope of how many structures we have, actually have. This just shows our category one and category two. So just to put a number on the number of residents, you know, 2,000, 2,700 residential properties in there, a great number of commercial properties, as I showed in the other slide, our, a lot of our public facilities are in this area too. Just to give you an idea of how many, how many, what portion of our population is affected directly by these storms. This is a woman that me and Bill Hurley met out, met with after the storm. We canvassed all the neighborhoods, visited everybody that called us. This woman happens to live right on Birch Road, opposite of Sherman School Soccer Fields there. Her point was, she was looking at the photo to try and to document on how high the water was and give us anecdotally what it did to her property. And while she was looking, you know, one of the things we noticed is that, you know, these shingles over here, the nail marks were rusty. So even half mile from the water, it was 30 inches up. So it's not just a waterfront community. This house has difficulties seeing the water, smelling the water, and it's, you know, it's a typical older style ranch that you saw on the beach area, so it's, it affects a big part of our population. Just a reminder of what Sandy did and how we got to this point. First thing we did the first couple months is we had to clean up Sandy debris removal, both the woody debris, the bulky pickup in this area, hazardous waste, getting the water out of there. Every single street over here, if you, you think of what's in a normal basement, furnace, washer, dryer, hot water heater, every single house had that in the curb, basically up and down, all the FEMA non-compliant houses. So we spent the first several months getting back to a sense of normalcy. Our next step was to fix up individual facilities, basically our, our jetties along the water, the fishing pier, our three navigational channels, our roadways, our seawalls in the beach area. And even though we did a good job of doing that, and we spent quite a bit of money on our projects, an important thing to remember is even though we fixed up individual facilities, we didn't change the equation. We did not do any, we protected individual facilities, nothing really to address the next Sandy. So after the initial getting back to normalcy was occurred, then we started to look into, in earnest, how to change the equation. The first one over there that we recently received, to protect our wastewater treatment plant, a critical facility. We changed in some of our, quite a few of our most important tide gates to create better natural drainage out of that. As we go forward, one of the things we're proposing here is to create a physical barrier between us and the sound to keep it out. Stormwater pump station, as I said, for storm and for floods and for normal damage. And the dikes that I said, as I said, from our flanks, which water currently goes through them and around them during heavy storms. So the concept of a barrier between Long Island Sound and Fairfield is, this is a cartoon version, but just to get everybody to start thinking, you know, this is a flood zone elevation here, what the V-zone elevation is at the barrier island. And even though it's the V-zone, which accounts for the velocity of the Long Island Sound, there, there will be waves on top of the V-zone. So 13 should not be thought of as still water that, if you're at 13.1, you're perfectly safe. Even at elevation 13, this one superimposes a four-foot wave on top of it. Waves may not be four feet, they may be three feet, but just as a exercise, you know, we believe that's a fairly reasonable estimate of a worst case of what you could plan for between the V-zone and a wave on top of it. So this is a concept, you know, how do we do that? Well, we're proposing some type of barrier to protect Fairfield from Long Island Sound. These are engineering sketches. A couple ways you do that. The way our barriers are set up normally, so something like this, a trapezoidal channel filled with a clayite-type material, this is something that exists in some form along a lot of our perimeters. That's a dike system that I mentioned. The biggest one we have is along the Pine Creek, along the houses, along Pine Creek Avenue and Old Dam Road. There's a formal dam, something like this, that was built probably in the late 60s, early 70s. It served the purpose for years. Similarly, there's dams like this in locations along the South Benson Marina, Turney Creek. This type of wall isn't much different than a seawall, but where, where you can't, you don't have the property to extend horizontally from one end to one end, you need some sort of a, a wall, concrete wall, with a lot of beef to hold it, hold back the water. So that's what a flood control barrier would look like, in theory, anywhere along our beach, to keep water on this side of it and keep this side dry. So what we have now is, this is the series of maps, and we'll get into more detail, but this basically lays out the Fairfield coast, with this one being the Riverside Drive, where Turney Creek crosses it, or just a little ways from Vinnie's Ale House is the biggest monument there. And this just shows the whole Fairfield coast going down to South Pine Creek Avenue. And I believe this is where Mr. Mahusky will, will take over the specifics of some of these items.
I live on Colonial Drive, and I'm a member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board. So that map shows, shows the premier beach area, numbers 1 through 10. That stretch was all included in a grand master plan grant request that Joe and his team put together back in November of 2013. That was the $27 million request. Turns out that was not granted. That was a CDGB-DR grant. They, don't hold me to any of these numbers. They had like $40 million available, $27 million for one community, who was, no way this is going to happen. So that grant was, was denied. So what, what that suggested we subsequently do is break up that grant project into individual projects, and that's what's listed here. So just to expand a little larger, number one is at Riverside Drive, where we come down the hill from the post road. As you come down that hill, you come into an area that is beneath the base flood elevation. In January of 2014, Public Works Department, and I want to give a shout out here to Laura Pooley, because I think she's our civil engineer, senior civil engineer, and I think she did the lion's share of this work, even though Joe's the front man for that group, there are other people behind him. So that, that request from January 2013, covered from the beginning of Riverside Avenue, right at the bottom of the hill, and it went all around, down Riverside Drive, across the open space area there, which is existing high ground, and it went over, past the marina. It would have better protected the Oyster Road area here, and it went past the skate park, all the way over to the existing dune at Jennings Beach. The objective of that was to raise the dune and improve the tide gates. An interesting aspect of that grant request was that it was made to the National Wildlife Foundation. And the reason that it was able to be made that way is because of these, the tide gates that Joe mentioned, SRT, the term is SRT, self-regulating tide gate. And those self-regulating tide gates have restored some of our marshes over the last 20 years, have restored some of our marshes to a health that they did not have before. Interesting thing that I learned when I got on the board was that Tom Stanky, the longstanding conservation director who recently retired, Tom apparently has a patent on self-regulating tide gates, because he came up with that. tide gates because he came up with that concept. So they, as the tide rate, as the tide comes in, they open up and they let the water go into the marsh, but when the water height gets to where it's like, okay, you're at the banks of the marsh now, we don't want you to go any farther and start inundating the neighborhoods, they close. And the tide can continue to go up, and then as the tide comes back down, when the tide gets at the proper level, they open again so that that salt water, after having been in the marsh, flows back out to the sound, and you have that natural give and take of salt water replenishing the marshes and all of the benefits that you get from marshes. So the length, the length that we're talking about there is 6,700 feet, plus minus. The cost of that project was $5 million, and the request for the grant was $4,875,000, which would have left $125,000 as the town portion of that. And that's why these grants are so important, because the cost of doing these major projects is so high that if, if we tried to do it out of tax dollars, I for one would be standing up and saying, no, 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 we can't, we can't do that. The, the marshes, the marshes in this area do have a flow, a tidal flow in and out. There are, there are two, I think there's two SRTs here, but they are a little limited in capacity. So part of this grant would have replaced or added a total of seven new, seven tide gates so that the marshes would be made healthy again.
Quickly, is it safe to assume that the decisions we made years ago to protect our marshlands that Joe talked about is not allowing us to apply for this grant to the National Wildlife?
The dike system that was put in place years ago protects from flooding that would otherwise occur at lower elevations. The SRTs did bring some of our marshes back to health, and we'll get to another item here where you'll see that one project that we have approved will restore one, another section of marsh.
Now, it's important, yeah, it's important that we did, we did not, we did not get that, we did not get that grant. When we wrote the grant, a lot of things we demonstrated, one of the criteria was that it wasn't just a flood control project, that it was to maintain and keep the, keep the marshes viable. Hopefully I didn't step on.
Well, you're just in front, that's all.
Which was my question, that is, by doing that, we're allowed to go after it from this perspective, should we be successful?
And my last highlight on this item is grant request denied.
It would also, a grant opportunity tied into a conservation.
Okay, item number, item number two, this is on Jennings Beach in the neighborhood of the Sandcastle Playground, and that would be the location for the pump station that Joe talked about. We'd dig a big hole in the ground that would go down 20 feet. All of the storm sewerage in this area would go, would now be able, with replacement of pipes, would now be able to flow more readily into that pump station. Primarily rainstorms. If we get a severe rainstorm, there's, there's pockets of flooding at high tide, there's pockets of flooding in the beach area now, which, as Joe explained, has nowhere to go. So that, that pump station would be, would be located there. Estimated cost for that is $5 million. The grant was submitted for a total of $5 million, and we requested 300, $3,750,000, so the town portion would still be $250,000 for that pump station. And the grant, the grant request was submitted in August of 2014, and it was denied on December 19th, 2014. We will reapply at the next opportunity. Yes.
So just a question, so when you're denied, do they give you a reason and a way to kind of address the concerns, or do you think it was purely financial, and if it was purely financial in terms of the cost, you're going to reapply and change what?
I will defer to our grant writing team to answer that question.
Yeah, you get the, the standard rejection letter, and I think the, the biggest reason why we weren't unsuccessful in the, the National Fish and Wildlife Grant was, I think, because there wasn't enough money to go around. We, you know, we were excited when we saw it. It was a, you know, it seemed like a good match to us, but once again, that's a, it's a highly competitive type grant. And there was, I think at the end, we'll talk about other, some of the other grants we pursued and, and the sort of like the schedule of what grants were out there, what we applied for, and some of the successes we had and some of them where we weren't successful.
But I mean, if you are going to go back now, you said you're going to resubmit this grant. Is there, what's changed? Is there more money? Are you changing something in terms of the application that would make it more desirable for, you know, attractive for them to give us this money? That's what I'm wondering.
Well, the, and there's a couple, we pursue multiple avenues. So on this section over here, one of the things we'll get to later, there's a potential for Army Corps to become involved, and the way you get them involved for this portion is through congressional authorization. There's another grant opportunity that's coming up, which the state of Connecticut is the applicant, working with Connecticut Town, so we're working with the Office of Policy and Management to get that one done. So there's the same projects, you know, fishing for different ones, but the one from the Office of Policy Management is a federal one that I believe it's funded by the Rockefeller, an NGO that's putting money into this. But the way you get that NGO money is through the state, through the towns, so the state is putting together an application, which there'll probably be a multitude of Connecticut towns like us going after that money. But the one that's from OPM is probably the most like this grant. And you try to read the grant and, and you try to get the hook, you know, you look what they're asking for, you try to make our project tailor to the types of projects they like to fund, et cetera. And just to take a step back, one of the first, and there's been a series of opportunities there, one of the first grants that became available after this, probably about a year after Sandy, which was the Hazard Mitigation HNGP money. And one of the positions that the town of Fairfield was in was that, that's, that was, you know, the same pot of money that our citizens were applying for, for house elevations. So one of the, you know, it wasn't, it was, one of the, the negatives with going after that money was that we were competing against our citizens and, you know, we would have, so there's been probably about four, there's altogether like about five of those different pots of money, and we've been successful in some of them. So I think we've gotten a good share, and hopefully there'll be more, and we'll keep putting together biopic projects and, you know, keep going after the money that's necessary to, to get some of these pieces accomplished.
So that, this is Beach Road, and that's the end of Jennings Beach. The dotted line is the existing dune at Jennings Beach. Item number three, this property is the Fairfield Beach Club. If you live in this area here, one of, one of the stereotypical things is, my property flooded because that darn beach club let all the water from Long Island Sound come across their property and look at damaged my swimming pool, my grass, whatever. Well, that's, that's kind of true, but there's a lot of different areas for the water to come into the general neighborhood, and once, once it gets in, you saw from Joe's profile that the area is so flat, it just goes everywhere it wants to go. Having said that, in order to make our defense line continuous, we have to get past there. It occurred to us, the most straightforward way to do that would be to build a flood wall. It would go from the high point of the dune at Jennings, it would come out and on town, that's still town property at the margin there. It would stay on town property at the southern edge of Fairfield Beach Road, and then when it got to this point, it would go back toward the sound and connect to the existing dune. There is an existing dune that runs from, right at, right at that property line in front of those three private residences and ties over into, we call this Rickards Beach, and then this solid line starts the existing timber bulkhead around the Penfield One Pavilion. So that flood wall there would be a concrete structure like the, like the little drawing Joe had earlier. We estimate the construction cost of that at $3 million. This is a conceptual estimate only, and I'm going to, I may have said this before, the numbers here, don't quote these numbers, some of these are, well, I don't know, how big a base is that wall going to need to keep from tipping over when the, when the wave action hits? Is it going to be $1,000 for a linear foot of it or $2,000 for a linear foot of it? We don't know.
Is there a cost comparison between the earth and versus the concrete? I know you're talking, like you're right in the parking lot almost there, Fairfield Beach, but just.
My, my, my opinion is that a concrete flood wall would be more expensive to construct than just mounding up some earth. The trade-off is that for the earth, if you want, if you want the earth to be five feet high and you want a two-to-one slope, well, you've got 10 feet on this side and 10 feet on that side, so you need 20 feet of length in order to build up that five-foot-high wall. And especially in this area where there's all these residences, we don't have the luxury of that. You can, for an example of that, you can look at the dune on Jennings Beach. If you just go and walk over one of those timber walkways that cross the dune, you'll see what the dune construction requires. So $3 million, conceptual estimate only, we've, we've not done any kind of engineering studies to flesh out what's a, what's a good way, what's a bad way. We have not had any conversation with Fairfield Beach Club, although recognize that, as I said, this would be all built on town property for, for two legs of it. That leg and that leg would be on town property. It shows two openings, which would be required in order to provide them the access to their property that they currently have. They have, they have two openings. Those openings would, of necessity, and again, first brush at this stuff, of necessity, those would have to be some kind of a mechanical thing. That's not the best option because ideally, we would like this entire structure to be a passive structure, that you didn't have to do something the day before the flood came to get ready. It would just sit there and be ready at all times. But of necessity, there would be some openings necessary. The total length of that wall is like 1,050 feet. What it would protect, what it would protect as far as the sound goes is 800 linear feet of sound. So this is, again, Mr. Grauer mentioned the puzzle. These are all pieces of the puzzle, and eventually we're going to get to some, what I think it adds up to like three miles of, of protection. And that, you know, the pieces, pieces of, pieces of the puzzle, the volume of, of storm water from the sound, salt storm water that gets into our beach area, it's a function of what the height of that water is and how long the water stays at that height and what the area of the opening is. So any of these measures that we reduce the area of the opening, we're going to reduce the total volume that gets into the flood plain. Penfield Beach, we also submitted, we submitted a grant request in August of 2014, and on December 19th, we were notified that it was selected for funding. So we currently have a grant in addition to all of the stuff that's happening with the rebuild of Penfield One, this is an additional grant that we have been granted. It was requested at $300,000, it was approved for $225,000, and that's going to help harden the protection at Fairfield, at Penfield One. That is the shed at the western end of Penfield Beach. That is high ground right now, and this would be the end of the timber bulkhead rock wall that exists there. So now we have to get from Penfield property over to the reef that comes off at Lighthouse Point. That's the tricky one, because you have a lot of private residences there. Some of these residences already have seawalls, but they're nowhere near the height that they need to be to protect. This other line here is another potential path. What this does is over here, it runs at the margin of the existing marsh and the backyards of those existing private residences. What the best path will be, what the reaction of people will be, we don't know, we have to test that. One of the things we're going to do is reach out to neighborhoods and have conversations with them about, we want to build a 17-foot-high wall to keep us all from flooding, what do you think? And we'll go from there. Total conceptual estimate, $5 million. The distance along the shoreline there is about 1,650 feet. Conceptual at this time. Then we get, this is, this is Reef Road, this is Reef Road, this is the existing marsh, this is the Richard White Way that goes into the Public Works Town Yard area. So now we've gotten over here to the reef at Lighthouse Point, the end of Reef Road. This is College Place in there, it kind of runs off the map a little bit, but we need to get from there over to this existing dune berm. This is actually, if you go down Fairfield Beach Road, you go over the hump, that is actually the location of the sewer outfall from our sewage treatment plant where it goes out into Long Island Sound. Two paths present themselves. One, again, ideally, you protect the entire area right at the first line of defense at the enemy, which is Long Island Sound. The alternate path would be, again, at the margin of the marshes with the private properties. Don't know. At this point, at this point, I have no idea which, which would be the better, the better way to go. Conceptual, $3 million, conceptual cost estimate, approximately 1,350 feet. The Pine Creek culvert replacement, there is a culvert here, and this, this is Pine Creek that runs all through, all through here. There's a culvert there now, it's a single 40, 48-inch diameter tide gate. It is not one of the self-regulating tide gates. This marsh also connects across Reef Road to this marsh area, it also connects across Richard White Way to this marsh area. Those marshes are not as robust as they might otherwise be if they were getting the daily tide exchanges. So this item number seven is the Pine Creek culvert replacement. The estimated cost is $560,000, and we, we applied for a grant application in March of 2014 for that project, and we were awarded the grant in July of 2014. The design has begun, and considering the design permitting, contract evaluation, and award lead times involved, this work is expected to begin in early 2016 with a completion in the summer of 2016. So none of these things take place overnight. In, in place of the single 48-inch diameter, simple flapper gate now, we will wind up with two 48-inch diameter SRTs and two 60-inch diameter sluice gates, which are manually opened and closed depending on the storm tide level. So that, the total area now to get the floodwaters out of there, should they come in, will be five times greater than it is today. Wastewater Treatment Plant. Number eight is our wastewater treatment plant, and this shows an earthen dike around the entire wastewater treatment plant, including the fire training center. The wastewater treatment plant has, part of it is actually on this side of one Richard, or on Richard White Way. That project is $3,088,000. We put in a grant request for $2,316,000, and that grant request was put in, in July of 2014, and again, on December 19th, we were notified that we got that grant. And this is, this is a very important part of the project to protect our town infrastructure. If, if that sewage treatment plant got totally inundated and wiped out, we'd be looking at $35 million to replace it. So it's important to protect that asset. Part of that job would also include putting a pump station in there, I mean, that, that's going to be done, it's not like the Jennings Beach one. That pump station would be there in order to take out rainstorm waters that got inside the dike concurrent with a coastal storm, which many times happens. So the town portion that, that's left after that grant is $772,000. But now that we have the grant in hand, this is still true, right Joe? But now that we have the grant in hand, this is still true, right, Joe? We're gonna apply for that Connecticut Clean Water Fund grant application?
Correct.
To try, so this additional grant application, we'll apply for it in hopes of offsetting some of our costs. And in that case, if we successfully apply for and awarded the grant, the town's portion will potentially be $154,000 for that project. So that's a good leveraged ratio. That dike, this area here is an AE-13 FEMA elevation. That dike would be built to a 14-foot level, so we would be providing ourselves with one foot of additional freeboard above the FEMA level. There's a, talked about water that gets trapped on Fairfield Beach Road. This is an outfall. A sluice gate is there now. It's a 30-inch diameter sluice gate. It takes forever to drain the storm water that gets trapped along that section of Fairfield Beach Road. We are installing an additional 36-inch sluice gate. There's no grants involved here. Public Works is just doing that with their available funds in the normal course of their business. But that will help drain those floodwaters more quickly. This is the Great Marsh at the end of Penfield. This is the face of, that's Pine Creek Avenue. This is the face of the Pine Creek dike that runs all the way around here, and it runs over to the high ground. There's an SRT gate here that takes care of this marsh. There's also another SRT set of gates here that takes care of the marsh up beyond that runs all the way up to where Fairfield Lumber used to be. This section, item number 10, is included as a project because that would protect these low-lying houses on South Pine Creek Avenue. $2,200,000 conceptual cost, and that, the length of that earthen dike would be 2,300 linear feet. Number 11. Number 11 is the Pine Creek dike elevation project. This is the one that's involved with the Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps of Engineers has looked at that, and they decided it's a viable project. So they have proposed that we agree with them to do a Phase One Engineering Feasibility Study. Total cost of that study is $335,000. The town portion would be $118,000. The total cost of that project, the estimated cost, and this is estimated by the Army Corps of Engineers, is $7,700,000, and that would take care of 1,660 linear feet of dike. This idea of the length you would need to go up another three feet, that length really isn't there, so this would be executed by building a three-foot concrete wall on top of the dike that is there presently. The rest of that dike that was built in late '69, early '70, goes around here, as I said. That is also in need of elevation. The present elevation of that dike is like nine and a half feet. The FEMA areas, they vary as you go along here. It goes FEMA elevation AE-11, AE-12, AE-13. So the dike would have to be raised to some number still to be determined. Again, conceptual cost, $7,100,000. The length, that's 5,900 feet, which is over a mile in length. So that's a pretty long protective structure. And that is the end of the 12 measures. No questions? I'll turn it back over to Mr. Grauer. Do you want to?
I think there's one more slide which I'll talk about. There was, I was gonna talk more about just the next step in grant opportunities. As Mr. Mahusky mentioned, there's a potential, the team with the Army Corps, on a study for this project. One of the things that we plan to be doing at the next Board of Selectment meeting is discuss some of our capital projects. I plan on submitting that for a capital request. And just to clarify what the number will be, the agreement we're working out with the Army Corps for the funding source is, they're putting the study, we're gonna say at about $350,000, with the first $100,000 paid for by the Army Corps. Then it's a 50/50 split after that. But once again, that's something that the Board of Selectmen can expect to see potentially at their meeting as soon as two weeks from now. And the other potential with the Army Corps, as I mentioned, the other part of Fairfield, our beach area there, in order for them to get involved in studying that project would take, it's beyond the scope of what the staff could do at Army Corps. So that's something, as I mentioned, would need a congressional appropriation for. So we have to start strategizing to see if that's something we want to pursue and how we best go about that.
As you've seen, this is a quite complex project. It will take years to complete. The Flood Erosion Board will be inviting groups of the affected property owners to our meetings to hear in more detail our plans and for us to hear their concerns. At present, much of what you have heard and seen tonight is conceptual, and we invite public participation in comment on our meetings. Our goal is to develop a flood protection plan for Fairfield that is built to FEMA elevations and standards for each of the segments and protects as many properties as possible. As I stated in my opening comment, the enemy is Long Island Sound, and it is our intention to fight the sound where it meets the shoreline, and protecting as much of the town's tax base as possible. The plan you have seen tonight is our conceptual playbook and how to do this. The plan will be worked on further with engineers and affected property owners and regulatory agencies. Because priorities will vary based on the approval of grants, we cannot give you a priority list of the segments you have seen tonight, though all are considered important. And each completed piece of the puzzle will reduce the devastating flooding that we experienced from Irene and Sandy, as well as storms that came before them and will come after them. As grants are received, we will come back to you asking for your support in approving the town's portion of expenses. We are recommending, we are a recommending board. You, as the duly-elected leaders of Fairfield, have the heavy responsibility of leading the town away from repeated flooding. As you saw tonight, the town spent $5 million to clean up after Sandy and another $5 million to repair the damages. That $10 million to get back to pre-Sandy conditions, and it doesn't take into account the multiple millions of dollars property owners have and will spend to repair, raise, rebuild their homes, or replace their landscaping. It is our hope, and the hope of those living and working in the floodplain, that you support the Flood Erosion Control Board in our efforts to control flooding, going forward and spend tax dollars not to clean up or repair, but on preventative action. We again thank you for giving us this opportunity to present to you and all of the members of the town. And if you have any further questions, please bring them up.
Also, as you look through your book list, if you develop questions at a later date, please bring them to board's attention.
All right, first off, thank you, and Mr. Grauer, you and your team, Mr. Michelangelo, you and your team. I want to thank you both, as well as your teams and the presenters here today for just a phenomenal presentation analysis. And it's obvious there was a tremendous amount of work that went into this, and it utilized a lot of the, what I'll call, day-to-day knowledge of what the impact of flooding has been in the beach areas. Mr. Grauer, you laid out that the plan is to present this out to various neighborhood groups, specifically in the beach area, and I think that's great. What I'm gonna ask the Board of Selectmen, given the hour, given this is really a draft or an update of what's taking place, I'm gonna ask the, Mr. Grauer and the board to come back to us after the presentations and the neighborhood groups with any changes, edits, or considerations that are taking place there. I would open it up to questions from this board, but given the lateness of our, and we do have some attorneys waiting in the wings, that if we can keep the comments or questions to a few key questions, realizing that we will see this again, not only the individual pieces, but I'll be very interested in seeing what the feedback is from the neighborhood. And I'm just very impressed with the presentation and how you stepped through it and the analysis. And I think from a town standpoint, you've laid this out very clearly in terms of what our decisions are, and I realize there's a lot of passion involved around this, and I appreciate the objectivity with which you laid this out, from my standpoint. But I'll open it up to my colleagues.
I just want to say thank you. It's a lot of information. It's very thorough. I know it's just conceptual, but it's also got a lot of concrete details. So thank you for that. And it's, what I would mainly say is that, to me, this is visionary. You are really thinking ahead. You are not letting another storm take a surprise. And I heard so much from people down in the beach area after Storm Sandy, who said, "We've got to figure this out. I mean, we can't let this happen again. We've got to be proactive," and that's what I see here. And I just do want to reference one thing, which is that I have had, she passed away last spring, a very dear friend who was the mayor of Bradley Beach, which is on the Jersey Shore. And one of the things she did as mayor is she had the vision to say, "Listen, we've got to build a barrier." This was prior to Storm Sandy. "We've got to build a barrier." And she actually encouraged residents of Bradley Beach to donate Christmas trees. Her name was Julie Shrek, by the way, to donate discarded Christmas trees, and they built, they used the Christmas trees as the base for these dunes that they built. And as a result, that Bradley Beach was spared from any flooding, one of the few beach towns. And again, that's her legacy, but she was a visionary, and I think if Fairfield can, I think we're thinking along the same lines, and thank you very much for the presentation.
Mr. Grauer?
Sure. Certainly, I completely agree with Mr. Tetro's comments about the report and the effort and the work, and I can't thank you enough for all of that. It's a lot of information, and, you know, we do have, and we will have a lot of questions, and it is late. So if we're not going to have an adequate, you know, time tonight to delve into all of our questions, what do we think is the best way to further address them? Do we want to aggregate them and push them forward through your office? Do we want to have a meeting that's earlier and ask some at that point in time? Do we want to ask some now? I'm open to suggestions on that.
I think there's a couple options there, based on the thoughts from the board. One is that we invite the presenters back in perhaps a month, say, the second meeting in February, where we'd have a chance to, A, have absorbed some of this material, and have a discussion session and hold this session then. So we have time to review this and collect our questions, so we can have an interactive discussion at that point. We certainly can forward questions ahead of time. I don't need to suggest that. The other kind of milestone point in my thinking was after this has gone out, and we've had several public hearings on this to various groups, that we invite the presenters back to let us know what the feedback was, what they've learned, what their thoughts are, any tweaks or options. Even within the conceptual plan, there's some options that were presented, and I think it might be good to hear kind of what the feedback is and which way they're leaning at this point in. But beyond that, I'm open to...
No, I think that's a reasonable solution. I just want to make sure that we have enough time to ask the proper questions and enough of them so that we can do this justice without racing through two or three questions in 30 minutes. I mean, I'm happy to stay, but this could be a lengthy discussion.
And I would suggest we all, I think that's it. To do it justice, it needs to be, I think, time. I don't want to limit this board at all in terms of that sense. We also have another presentation coming up, Private Executive Session, on some pending legal matters that may take some time to go through, so.
Understood.
I would point out to my colleagues on the board that we do have a series of questions submitted by one of our residents, and I think that this will also give us time to review those.
Yes, there's some great questions in these documents that we received as well. But each one of these could take 10 or 20 minutes.
So if that's okay, yeah.
Or more.
So from our planning, since this is a report, we don't have to postpone it or do something like that. We can identify that we, subject to your availability, look at, perhaps, I think the second meeting in February might be a good time to give us a month or so to absorb this, get over some of the non-recurring and some of the other projects, discussions we have coming up that will also be lengthy.
Mm-hmm.
But again, thank you very much for the presentation. This is one of the best presentations I think we've seen as a board.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Great partnership.
You are.
It shows. Thank you. Thanks for your diligence in terms of those grants, because you kind of get struck down, you go back, and you...
All right.
This young lady takes the credit.
Mr. Grauer, the only other thing I'd suggest is that as you look at doing some of your public presentations, please give my office a call, and we'll try and coordinate so we can help get the word out on those to make sure that those are as well-publicized as we'd like, and so everybody sees us.
Well, we have a meeting coming up, January meeting. We're gonna set dates, when to meet with all the segmented groups, and use the facilities here to come up with the addresses so we can mail it to people.
Yep, and I just offer the use of our, to expand beyond just the mail list, because I think there might be other people interested. And certainly, as we're talking about, each one of these is a significant financial investment.
Yes.
And at some point, even if we work our magic with grants, there'll be some town-matching portion, no doubt. So I think it's important that anybody interested get a chance to hear what's going on. All right, so we'd like to help you with that. But again, thank you so much for just the superb job of us.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I've served in the Flood Erosion Board on and off for a lot of years. It is the first time we've been asked for a formal presentation.
You used your time well.
You did.
Thank you. All right. Next up, to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount recommended. May I have a motion to, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any amendments to that motion?
Yes, I move to amend item 10 to add at the end of the sentence in the amount of
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion as amended is before us. Any further discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next up, to hear, consider, and act upon any communications. The only real communication was the email that was included under the last item that we, has been distributed to each of you. Item 12, to hear, consider, and act upon any other business that shall probably come before this meeting. There's none that I'm aware of. Item 13 is a private executive session with the town attorney concerning pending litigation.
Excuse me, Mr. Board of Selectmen, may I take a picture of the board for the website?
Certainly.
Okay. So this will go on the web page for the selectmen. Now we have a new statement.
Oh, okay.
I appreciate this. It'll be very quick.
Updated graphics.
Two, three. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right.
Okay.
Then may I have a motion to go into private executive session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, may I have a motion to come out of private executive session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to point out that in private executive session, no motions were made and no votes were taken. Next item on the agenda is the motion to adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you both very much. Congratulations on your first meeting.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Stand by.